I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 7th, 2022 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Please hold the side conversations. Thank you. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumguard.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have an affidavit, a publication on file?
We do.
A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have a couple of presentations tonight before we start the regular agenda. I'd like to invite Police Chief Chris Wittitup. We have two new police officers to swear in.
Thank you. I think this is the largest crowd we've had here to see two swearing ins. That's why they're here. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, City Council, City Administrator Amber Powers. Again, we have the privilege of swearing in two officers who just completed the SDLA training. They both did extremely well, and I think they're going to make fine officers for our city. They'll begin FTO here in another week, but I want to read just a little bit about them. Officer Aaron Carmen and Officer Mia Pearson. First, Officer Aaron Carmen was born and raised in the Omaha metro area. He graduated from Miller South High School in 2011 and went on to obtain his undergraduate degree from Dohen University in 2015. While at Dohen, he played soccer, but more importantly, met Emily, leading to their marriage in 2017. Soon after, he enlisted in the U.S. Air Force and moved his family to Alaska where their son Abraham was born. During Aaron's active-duty enlistment, he completed a postgraduate degree in criminal justice from Columbia Southern University as he had hopes of becoming a police officer in the future. Following his service commitment, the Carmans moved back to Nebraska, and Aaron transitioned from the military to the Papillion Police Department. Aaron is eager to continue serving as a police officer for the city of Papillion, and he hopes to make a positive impact on the community, and we look forward to having him join our city and our police family. Officer Mia Pearson was born and raised in Omaha, just up the street in neighboring -- I'm sorry, was born in Omaha and then raised just up the street in neighboring La Vista. She graduated from Papillion-La Vista High School in 2018 and then went on to obtain her Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice with a minor in law enforcement. She is currently pursuing her Bachelor's Degree at the University of Nebraska-Homaha, studying criminal justice and psychology. Mia likes to spend her free time at the lake with her family, shopping, or hanging out with her dogs. Mia chose law enforcement because she likes the variety of the job. Not every day is the same, and she likes to talk and meet new people. She can't wait to help serve and protect such an amazing community that she has got to experience her whole life, and we look forward to having her join our city and our police family. Just a little side note, Officer Carmen was the SDLA valedictorian, graduated with the highest composite score where they combine shooting, or actually firearms, scenario testing, administrative or written tests. He also earned the Leadership Award and the Fitness Award. So he's the first officer to do that with the SDLA, so we're truly proud of him for that. Likewise, Mia was a 2018 softball captain for the state championship Monarchs, played with Jordan Ball, so she was in rare company there. She also, when she was at Metro, I believe it was Metro, correct? She entered into a criminal justice contest down in Kansas, and she won six of seven of the events down there against a whole host of other Metro college-type students. So that's also equally impressive. We think they'll do a really good job for us.
For people who've never heard it, this is like the longest oath ever, but it's set by the legislature, so.
Bear with us. You raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Born and domestic.
Born and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purposes of evasion.
Or for purposes of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor a member of.
Nor a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So don't forget.
So don't forget.
Aaron, if you want to first go ahead and introduce your family that's here tonight, and I think your wife Emily will be pinning you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
State five, Pauline, Jeff, my stepmom Angie, my wife Emily, my two sisters Hannah and Ally, today's birthday, but for me.
Mia, you're next.
My dad John, my mom Allison, my boyfriend Cole's in the back, my brother Brandon, his girlfriend Skylar, and then my grandma, Cole's grandma and his dad.
Thank you. We -- this policing is a family affair, so we appreciate you being here.
And then Jamie Brown.
Congratulations. Thank you. This is the one everybody came for. We have a presentation of our annual audit. And if people are standing, the front rows were reserved for the officers' families, so feel free to come up and sit down if you want to. Welcome.
Hello. Mayor, members of the City Council, city management personnel, I'm Colleen Jensen. I'm an Audit Senior Manager. The information that you have in front of you does say BKD. That was the firm that I current -- or I worked with while the audit was underway, effective June 1st. BKD did merge with DHG, and we became Forvis. So I am now with Forvis, but here presenting the results based on our audit for BKD. The mayor, you already stole my thunder. I said this is thinking this is the most exciting meeting that I've been to, and I don't think I'm going to get the applause after my presentation that just happened, but that's okay. There you go. There you go. So I'm here tonight to go over a required communication document, also known as the Management Letter. It was included in the presentation materials, and this really just provides a general overview of the scope of the audit that was performed by BKD. Specifically, it states that the audit was performed with, within general accepted auditing standards to ensure that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. In addition, we also perform audit procedures under government auditing standards, which requires us to review the compliance of regulations specifically in relation to federal funding as well as laws and regulations that would come up during that audit testing. So again, we establish scopes, and we do that by having various interviews with management and personnel to determine which areas of the financial statements are more susceptible to risk. And based on that, we set these scopes or these thresholds and really focus on those areas that are more susceptible to risk as we perform our auditing procedures. I do want to remind you that an audit does not relieve you all of your responsibilities of the information contained within the financial statements. In addition, an audit is not meant to catch fraud or any fraudulent reporting or transactions. However, if that information were to come up, we would communicate that with you all, and we're happy to note that there is no items here that need to be communicated in relation to fraudulent reporting or activity. In addition, we don't perform an audit of every transaction, of course, of the city, again citing those scopes. So something that you should just be aware of from that standpoint. Specifically, if you look on the second page of this communication, it talks about some of the accounting policies of the city that are specifically disclosed in Note A. So that's a good reference for you as you're reviewing the financial statements to ensure how is the city transact -- or accounting for certain transactions, and what are the policies and procedures in place for reporting. In addition, on the bottom half of that page, it does talk about any alternative accounting treatments or significant unusual transactions. There were no items that came to our attention during the audit procedures. One item, though, that we do want to bring attention to is that the financial statements always have a piece of judgment. So specifically looking at the financial statements, the allowance for doubtful accounts as well as any depreciation methods or lives are estimates or judgments based on management's input and sometimes historical transactions. So those can't be tied directly to a specific balance per se, but there are inputs that are used to determine what those balances would be. On page three of this document, then, it does talk about some audit adjustments. So during the course of an audit, there may be adjustments that we propose to correct the financial statements for currently how they're being reported. Management has the opportunity at that point to determine whether or not those adjustments are required, or they believe that they are required, and so they have the option of posting those adjustments or passing on those audit adjustments. You'll see here that there were audit adjustments that were proposed and posted by management as well as some adjustments that were elected not to be posted by management, which are detailed further in what we consider to be the past adjustment schedule. So you can review that for those items. Typically, those items are passed due to sometimes an administrative nature, so the impacts of those really, from an administrative standpoint, would be quite cumbersome to go back and correct, as well as then looking at them holistically really are immaterial to the users of the financial statements and would not mislead the users of the financial statements. At the bottom of page three, it does talk about two new accounting standards that the city implemented this year, GASB 84 and GASB 97. You will see as you're looking through the annual comprehensive financial report that that has changed how the reporting of the retirement plans are shown. Currently, those were shown within the financial statements, and you'll see under these standards that's no longer required to be reported within the financials. Then on page four, specifically going over the internal control structure. So again, as an audit, we do look at the internal control structure of the organization or the government. However, we don't perform what we call to be operating effectiveness testing, so we ensure that the design of the controls are in place, and then we test those to ensure that the controls are working as designed. Based on that, we then determine whether or not if there are any inefficiencies or potential inconsistencies, whether those rise to the level of a deficiency, significant deficiency or material weakness. Specifically, at the bottom of page four, you'll note that there was a material weakness that was noted during this financial statement audit, which is later referred to on page 114 of the annual financial comprehensive report, and then also on page 116 on the schedule of findings and question costs. And again, that material weakness is really related to the adjustments that were proposed during the audit process, as well as a prior period restatement to the financial statements, which is shown or disclosed in further detail in Note B that you can review. After we've considered all of those activities, we've done our inquiry with the city, reviewed those transactions, then we determine what opinion would be placed on the financial statement report. And so we are happy to note that there is a clean or an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the city. Again, there are some items here that we've specifically talked about that city management is working on to improve for future financial reporting, but we are happy to issue that clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements. I wasn't going to go into detail on the financial statement activities. I'll let Nancy touch a few high points, and then I'll be open to questions if you have any.
Thank you. Nancy?
Nancy Hypes, Finance Director for the city of Papillion. Just trying to keep this a little bit short tonight. One of the major, what I'll deem to be slightly major changes this year is in the governmental funds. Papio Bay and Papillion Landing have moved under the General Fund as departments for the fiscal year ended September of 30 of '21. We actually have an ordinance in front of you tonight, final rating, that will move those to special revenues, so they will be separately displayed on the upcoming year's report, because we believe that was the intent of the council. We just need to formalize it. The other item that we've continued to experience is that sales tax has been extremely high, mainly due to some anomalies for companies that are under construction that are also have signed incentive programs with the state of Nebraska. So we know there will be rebated a large portion of those sales tax, which by statute is top-secret information until they actually file the claim with the state and the state approves it. We were informally notified back in March or April before we issued that we do have to expect a $33 million claim getting approved by the state this summer, which will result in the state to take that back out of our sales tax over a 12-month period starting in December of 2023. So that's fairly significant. That is covered in the subsequent footnote, which is on page 60 of the document, page 65 of the PDF. So that, a large portion of our cash on hand is restricted. We know that it's going to be requested back from the state. We've set it aside so that when the state starts taking that money back, we can continue our normal operations for the city. Another major item that we spent quite a bit of time on last year was refunding bonds. We refunded six different issues to save interest in the future, and we also called one highway allocation bond with outright call to save on the future interest, and we paid down 4.6 million of bonded debt throughout the year, leaving us with a debt schedule right now that we really don't have anything left to refund, which is probably okay as interest rates start to tick back up in the last six months. If you want the, what I'm going to call the friendly version of the financials, I would suggest reading of the management discussion letter. It's where there's some comparisons that I've done between this year and last year, a little more friendly to those that aren't in the profession of reviewing statements.
Nancy, I want to thank you for all your work. And for people that aren't aware, I want to thank the council audit committee as well. We have, four of the council members serve on an audit committee, and we rotate those members every year, so there's a different set of eyes. And one of the things they do is rotate auditors, so it's actually the first year of the engagement with the new firm, so probably some learning on both sides. So thank you for all the time and for your report as well. Council, have any questions? Thank you very much. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. Papillion Days is almost here. The kickoff event is next Wednesday, June 15th, and the events run through Sunday, June 19th. And as always, we're looking forward to fun, exciting, and family-friendly event. Thank you to the Papillion Community Foundation for putting the event on, and all of our city staff that help, helped them with that, several departments and several employees. So thank you. As part of that, there will be a city hall open house and ribbon cutting during Papillion Days, and that's on Wednesday, June 15th. The open house is from noon to 4:00 p.m., and then the ribbon cutting is at 4:00 p.m. There will also be another open house, for those that can't make that, on June 21st from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., which is right before the next council meeting. So if anyone wants to come and take a look at everything that was done, all the beautiful work, that would be a good time to do that. Congrats to the Papillion 55-plus Club for winning the Senior Olympics. That was held on May 18th. Papillion won gold, La Vista won bronze, and Bellevue won, or silver, excuse me, La Vista won silver and Bellevue won bronze. So well done by everybody. And a big thank you to Meta, the Parks Department, and all the volunteers that helped to plant 90 trees at Prairie Queen on May 20th. And a special thank you to Meta for donating those trees, so wonderful addition to that area. And then finally, you'll start seeing work on the Hawk Signal at the intersections of Second and Washington Street. Those will begin shortly after Papillion Days concludes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumguard.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Six eight zero nace.
Motion passes. On the consent, there were a couple of items where we were appointing some people to boards and commissions. There's enough of a crowd here. I don't know if they're here. Is Brian Hauser here?
Thank you. For people that don't know, Brian is a certified arborist, I believe, and forestry expert and going to be serving on our tree board, so thank you for that. We take trees very serious, urban forestry very serious. We've been Tree City USA for probably 37 years plus. We have a nursery, we have a certified arboretum, and so the tree board is extremely important. So thank you for calling up and your willingness to serve. And is Heather here? You are. I didn't see it. So Heather Bernadie is, works for HDR? No. Yeah, it is HDR. And is a resident and is going to be serving as an alternate on the planning commission. So thank you again for your willingness to serve. If anybody's interested in serving on boards or commissions, we've got about eight of them, and it's about 50 individuals. So sometimes when there's a vacancy, we don't always get volunteers, so thank you both for stepping forward. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 1968, an ordinance to rename Flint Street as dedicated by the Belterra Phase III Final Platte to be Beeman Street. Is a council member will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Stube. Item D2, Ordinance 1969, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Chapter 150, to clarify existing sections and create a new Article 2 governing the lease of city property and to provide for an effective date. Is there a councilman that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Sunday. Item E1, Ordinance 1963, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to LI Limited Industrial for the property legally described as attractive land located in the northeast quarter of Section 3 Township 13 North, range 11 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of South 156th Street and Shram Road. The applicant's Hubble Realty, Sarpy West Industrial. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents? Welcome. And if you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrew Koster, 10836 Old Mill Road, Omaha, 68164. I'm a top divisional door, a civil engineer on the project. This is an industrial development that is supposed to be developed over four or five phases over the next several years pending the sanitary sewer issue being resolved over the next couple of years. I'm just here to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1965, an ordinance to amend Section 170-32 of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with waivers of Chapter 170 subdivision of land. The applicant is the city of Papillion. Let's open a public hearing. Do we have any proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item E3, Ordinance 1966, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R2, single-family residential medium-density to R4 PUD2 multifamily residential specific planned unit development for the property legally described as the south 77 feet of Lot 2, Block 33, Beatles Edition, generally located at 526 North Jefferson Street. The applicant is St. Columboc Hill Church for parish campus expansion. It's a public hearing. Proponents, welcome.
Kyle Hawsey with the NA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. The piece of property that we're looking at is a .25 acre piece of land located on Jefferson Street between 6th and 5th Street. This is an expansion of the St. Columboc Hill Campus. It's currently zoned R2, looking for an R4 with a PUD overlay to tie it into the existing PUD that St. Columboc Hill Church has. Along with myself, Dr. Williams, representing the parishes in the audience as well, I'll make ourselves available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item E4, Ordinance 1967, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Section 15814, to modify existing sewer connection fees. Open a public hearing. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Ordinance 1964, an ordinance to create special revenue funds for Papio Bay and Papillion Landing. It's the item that Nancy mentioned during the audit presentation. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1964?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Sunday. Any discussion? Please vote.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumguard.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Six eight zero nace.
Motion passes. F2, Resolution R220064, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in northeast quarter of Section 3 Township 13 North, range 11 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner, South 156th Street and Shram Road. The applicant's Hubble Realty. I'll open the public hearing. Any additional comments? Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220064? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any discussion? Please vote.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Mumguard.
Yes.
Sunday.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Six eight zero nace.
Motion passes. Related item, F3, Resolution R220093, also a public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve a large project special use permit for the property legally described as attractive land located northeast quarter, Section 3 Township 13 North, range 11 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner, South 156th Street and Shram Road, Hubble Realty. Again, a public hearing. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220093? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Stube.
Yes.
Mumguard.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Sunday.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Six eight zero nace.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F4, Resolution R220089, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to authorize improvements within the downtown overlay district for the property legally described as the south 77 feet, Lot 2, Block 33, Beatles Edition, generally located at 526 North Jefferson Street. Applicant is St. Columboc Hill Church. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any other proponents or opponents? Welcome again.
Kyle Hawsey with the NA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant, as mentioned before, available for any questions.
Thank you. Anybody else? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R220089?
Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I noticed that there's a maintenance building as part of the project.
Let's do the motion in the second first, and then we can have a council discussion.
Very good.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Council discussion. Go ahead.
Give us a little idea as far as what that looks like. I don't think I saw anything in the information that was presented to us.
Part of, part of the PUD requires that the existing, or the proposed new building matches the architecture and building materials that is existing on St. Columbine Hill Church and School currently.
Very good.
So they will match together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Mumgarde.
I just want to praise you and solemnly thank Columbine Hill for what you've done on the east side of Jefferson Street. It's turning out exactly the way it should. You're doing a wonderful job, and it's improving the neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Engberg.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Six A zero Ns.
Motion passes. Related item, F5, Resolution R220090, Also a Public Hearing and a Vote. Resolution to Approve the Second Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Agreement for St. Columbine Hill and Parish Centers. It's a public hearing, we'll carry all the comments over, but anybody else want to say anything? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220090? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Jaworski? Any other discussion? Please vote.
Stube.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Engberg.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Sunday.
Yes.
Six A zero Ns.
Motion passes. F6, Resolution R220091, A Public Hearing and a Vote. Resolution to Approve a Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Update the Growth Management Plan and the Implementing Policies and Procedures for Such Plan as Adopted and Approved by the Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Agency. The applicant's the City of Papillion. It's a public hearing. Are there any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220091?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any discussion? Please vote.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Sunday.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Engberg.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Six A zero Ns.
Motion passes. F7, Resolution R220092, A Resolution to Accept a Dedication of Street Right-of-Way for South 153rd Street, South of Shram Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220092?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Engberg.
Yes.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Six A zero Ns.
Motion passes. F8, Resolution R220097, A Resolution to Approve the Second Amendment to the I-80 Logistics Hub Subdivision Agreement. Motion to approve Resolution R220097?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Engberg.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Sunday.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Six A zero Ns.
Motion passes. F9, Resolution R220100, A Resolution to Approve an Assignment of Obligations and Responsibilities Under a Buyback Agreement Initially Entered Into Between the City of Papillion, Nebraska Family Health Systems LLC and Family ER LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220100?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Engberg.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Six A zero Ns.
Motion passes. F10, Resolution R220101, A Resolution to Approve the First Amendment to EMS Medical Director Agreement Between the City of Papillion, Sarpy County, UNMC Physicians For a UNMC Physician to Provide Services as Medical Director for the Sarpy Tactical Medical Response Team or STACK Med. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220101?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Sunday.
Yes.
Engberg.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Six A zero Ns.
Motion passes. We only got one item left, and everybody's still here, so it must be what it's for. I do want to thank everybody. This room carries a lot of noise, and I appreciate how everybody's been quiet, and I just asked for that in the next, in the next item too. I know there might be some emotion on both sides, and we just asked for decorum, and so I appreciate the way everybody's been. We'll open the public hearing, and because we do have a lot of people, and I want to give everybody a chance, I'm gonna give the applicant five minutes, I'm gonna give anybody else, proponent, opponent, or neutral, three minutes. Everybody will have a chance, we'll stay here as long as you want, and then at the end, I will give the applicant three minutes for a rebuttal, and then we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Mumgarde.
Yes, I just, before we begin, I just need to inform the council that I am a member of the congregation of the church that is selling this land. I hold no leadership role there, I never have. I've been advised by legal counsel that I do not have a conflict of interest, and I can participate and vote in this matter.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure everybody aware of that.
Thank you. And Mr. Ingberg?
Rather repeat it all, I'm in the same position as Councilman Mumgarde. I'm not held any board position, or as a matter of fact, spoken to anybody about this matter with any other church members.
Okay, thank you. And I'll be the one watching the clock, so I may not get it exact, but I'll try to give a one-minute warning, and then at the top of the hour, I'll, I'll just say stop, and that'll be the indicator. Welcome, applicant. And if you'd state your name and address for the record? Oh, I gotta read it for formality, I'm sorry. F11, Resolution R220098, A Public Hearing and a Vote. A Resolution to Approve a Special Use Permit to Allow Funeral Services as a permitted use on the property legally described as Lot 3, Walnut Creek Hills Replat 20, Generally Located on the Southwest Corner, South 100, South 90th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is WC Investments, Inc., Walnut Creek Hills Funeral Services. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Proponents? Applicant, welcome. And if you'd state, everybody that comes up, if you'd state your name and address for the record, and then we're in it, we've got a little bit of a temporary sound system, so if you'd speak right into that microphone, that would help as well. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Dave T. Brock with Miller Architects and Builders, 3335 West Saint Germain Street, St. Cloud, Minnesota. With me is Mike Hoy, I'll let him hear his end.
Michael Hoy, 650 Forest Drive in Council Bluffs. I appreciate being, given the opportunity to speak tonight.
So we appreciate the opportunity to be here, and just wanted to touch on a few things. You mentioned the property on the southwest corner of 370 and 90th. We believe that, that site will be developed, there's no question about that, it's a very visible site. We feel our use is a great use for that site. A funeral home is a low-impact use, not a lot of traffic with it, not a hustle and bustle every day of the week, so we feel that is a perfect transition to the residential lots behind it. On the east side of 90th, that's a community commercial zoning, you could even make an argument that our lot would be something that could be asked for a rezone because of its location. So certainly, there could be a number of different uses there, and we feel our use is a great use for that. At the Planning Commission, there were a number of objections from neighbors, and we feel a lot of that is based on misinformation, misunderstandings, emotion. In the process then, as the packet went out to the city council, Mr. Thielen, the city attorney, had a conversation with myself, did some research on his own, and provided a lot of factual information for you that, that we want you to know and to, to deal with. A lot of what you're gonna he, hear is not factual, so we want to stick to the facts. The bottom line is, it's, it's a great use. The, the traffic concerns, we feel is, is invalid because the times of funerals, usually a funeral's at 10 o'clock, lasts maybe 45 minutes to an hour, then go to the cemetery, come back, have a lunch at the facility, fellowship with family, and typically out of there by 2 o'clock. Visitations are typically from 5 to 7 on evenings, so those are the funeral homes' peak hours. A lot of the concern was about the school adjacent to the property. Their times are drop-off and pickup, typically around 7:38, I believe, and pickup around 3 o'clock, so not anywhere close to where our peak times were, so we feel that the traffic would not be a concern, would not be an issue. Then the crematory itself was certainly a lot of the information and the concern of residents.
Two minutes.
Okay, but in, in the packet, it really shows that, as far as the Environmental Protection Agency, they don't even view it as significant enough to govern, and then the state of Nebraska does govern it, Department of Health does, and the Department of Environment and Engineering, and they too deem it insignificant. You have to apply for an operating permit, but it's a general operating permit. We did offer a tour to the council at Mr. Hoy's other facility, that he has cremations in operation, and for those that went, I hope you found that it's, most that go and see it typically say, oh, this is no big deal. It's a lot less of an issue than what people imagine it to be, so we want you to keep that in your mind as you consider our, our project.
One minute.
The last thing is, I have a bunch of pictures to show you, I could hand out, but it's very, very typical that a funeral home is in a residential zoning. We've done a number of funeral homes in my 30 years with the company, and I'd say a high percentage of them are in a residential zoning. We have crematories within 10 feet of four-story apartment buildings, no issues, no decline in property value, no, you know, no issue in renting apartments or having homes in those areas. It's been proven over the years that we have not had those issues. So, appreciate your time, and again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. And just for, for people's notes, if a council member asks a question, I don't hold that against the time. Go ahead, Mr. Sunday.
Is it Mr. Brock? Is that?
T.
Brock, sorry. My question is, if school concerns of the citizens are, are invalid, as you coined them, why do many localities have limitations as to how close you can build a funeral home to a school? I know we don't, but, but why do other localities do that if it's invalid, like, like you say?
I don't know that answer. I've not, in my 30 years, I've not experienced a municipality that has had that. Maybe there is, but I have never experienced it or are aware of that.
And a follow-up to that, in the, in the packet of information I went through today, I saw a Canadian study that admits that there's insufficient knowledge as to the actual detrimental health effects from crematoriums. Insufficient knowledge. So, again, why is it invalid for people living in their homes with small children in those homes to have concerns? Why is that invalid, if, if we don't have sufficient knowledge?
Well, that was one study, and there is, there is no evidence anywhere that indicates that there is any concern, that there is any issue. I assume you're talking about mercury fillings, is that what you're referring to?
There's all kinds of heavy metal chemicals that I read about, mercury being one of them, but why is it invalid for these folks to have that type of concern when you're building a crematorium so close to where they live 24/7?
Please no side comments.
I, I can't speak to that, I don't know, Mike, if you have any, also in the study was the University of Minnesota study where they were trying to legislate that they have the funeral director remove mercury fillings before they're cremated. They were gonna have legislature to do that. They did go ahead and test Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, along with the legislature and the cremation association. They did that testing and deemed that there was no concern or any proof whatsoever that mercury fillings getting into the air was any environmental concern for anyone, and as a result, the state of Minnesota dropped their legislation requirement, and they don't even regulate crematories in the state.
And other localities and states have different laws, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Mumgarde.
Well, let's talk about the place where we live, Nebraska and western Omaha. Do you have funeral homes with crematories in Omaha and Council Bluffs?
Yes, sir, we do.
How many?
We have three other mortuaries in the metro area, two have crematories on site. One of those is on North 90th and Spalding Street in Omaha, the other is on North 16th Street in Council Bluffs.
Okay. What emission-related regulations or permits have you had to get for those locations in Omaha and Council Bluffs?
In Omaha, there was no other special permitting, other than what went along through the Department of Health and Human Service for our mortuary establishment permit, along with the crematory permit.
How about Council Bluffs?
Council Bluffs, there is one extra certificate through the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, what's called a STACK permit, and that is it.
And you obtained that permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Omaha has no regulation at all about what comes out of your stacks as an emission?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sunday.
I've got a follow-up to that. Let's talk about those neighborhoods in Omaha that would be more like our neighborhoods[1531.75] here in Papillion, like, say, west Omaha. How many crematoriums out there?
Are you asking me to talk about ours on 90th Street?
I'm talking about newer neighborhoods like we are talking about here, where they're building crematoriums in, right into a newer neighborhood like you're proposing to do here in our community.
To speak of our own, I really can't talk about our colleagues or competitors organizations, but our mortuary on North 90th Street borders a very nice residential neighborhood, very similar to what, matter of fact, it's on 90th Street ironically. It is a busy commercial intersection on one side of the mortuary, and on the east side, it is a densely populated residential area.
Mr. Gaines.
Do your stacks have any kind of filtration on them?
So, the, it is not technically a filter, if you will, because of the process of which the cremation occurs. There are several cycles that the flame burns down any particles before anything gets to the stack.
So, it's a self-contained fire that the gases? I guess I don't understand that because I would think that would cause pressure. But I guess my question, maybe an easier question, is when you burn things, it emits fumes, vapors, so on and so forth. Is that correct?
The only thing that ever comes out of our stacks is a heat displacement, visual heat displacement.
And what would happen to any, for just, for example, just talking about one, mercury, what would happen to that?
As we've kind of talked, that is such a non-factor. The dental filling is such a small item. I don't know that anything has ever happened when a dental filling is cremated.
Did these crematoriums ever have accidents, for example, that would spew black smoke or noxious fumes across the country?
I think crematories have had issues where black smoke has come out of the stacks, yes.
Has that ever happened in any of your crematoriums?
In Council Bluffs, when we first opened, a little over 10 years ago.
So, do you, would you feel it'd be responsible then, in a industry that could be prone to accidents, or, and I've done a lot of research on this, and so I know it's occurred dozens of times over the past few years across the country. But is it responsible to put something that could spew black smoke or the smell of burning flesh, was some of the things I've heard and read about? Do you feel like that's responsible, putting it that close, not only to a neighborhood, but right next to a school?
I feel like the technology has changed so much, and some of that research that people have found with regard to the machines and the crematories themselves, the machines that would be in this location are very similar to that on North 90th Street. The emissions, we just don't experience those issues on 90th Street at all. And there's residential right there.
Okay. I don't have any more questions right now.
Mr. Mungard.
Thank you.
Well, following up on that question about the black smoke, if I saw that, I would be troubled by it. What would be occurring in there that would cause visible smoke to come out?
Usually, what causes that is improper operation of a machine, not letting it go through its cool-down cycles before you would put another deceased person in there for cremation. Sometimes it is when it's a very obese person that would cause that black smoke to come out. Those are the two primary items.
Well, okay. Your material indicates that your building operations, in your building operation statement that you gave us, you indicated that your existing location on 90th Streets, 90th Street has units that have air emission test results that are approved by the state of Nebraska. What are you talking about there?
Well, from the testing that has been done, there is a certain amount of, in your packet, there's a certain amount of pounds of emission that is allowed. And then there's, you know, from an industrial use all the way down to a crematory. So, what's allowed, I don't know the figure offhand, but I do know that a crematory is under the allowed amount for going up the chain, so to speak, of additional permits. For our general operating permit, it's a very simple, one-week process because of the emissions that we produce compared to some other industrial, which might take weeks or months to get approval because of the poundage of admittance that they produce. In that literature also is, some of the misconception is that what a crematory puts out is even half of the admittance than just a fireplace in someone's home. Certainly Burger King on a busy corner would produce far more admittance than our crematory would. So, there is really not much that comes out of it. As Mike said, in those instances where there was, it was an operator not doing something properly, and that's, I think, with anything anywhere, that if you don't do something properly, there can be issues. But there's many, the fuel that fuels your home, the fuel that runs your car, the hairspray you use on your hair, the makeup you use, there's far more environmentally concerned items in each person's home and each person's community than what our crematory here would put out.
Okay. You say you have some photographs. What do you have?
Well, several photographs. So, one is just the visual look, so.
Well, okay. You're showing us one with the stack. The diagrams or the, yeah, the drawings that are here in the material do not have the stacks in there.
Just because of our software doesn't have a stack to show. So, here's like an older crematory with the stack that many might think that a crematory is, and there's certainly those like that. But with the newer technology and the cap now that is made for this specific unit that Mr. Hoy is putting in, you do something like this.
Okay, the one you're showing us now, is that what this building will have?
That's correct. Yep, it would look like that. It would have material from the wall, cover the chimney area, and then that metal cap on top is specific for the cremation unit that Mr. Hoy is buying for this. It's also the same units he has in his other facilities.
Okay, would you please, that should be put in the record, so leave that with the city, please. Thank you.
Mr. Sunday.
Yes, Mr. T-Brock. I also read in the materials I went over in preparation for this meeting that the mercury from cremations accounts for more than 7% of the total mercury emissions into the atmosphere in a study done in British Columbia. You're familiar with that study, right?
Yep.
And it also was inconclusive, or just, I think, unknown what this mercury vapor, what type of significant risk this poses to the public. And I assume that's because most crematoriums are away from the public. Isn't that true?
No, that would not be true.
Well, it is in Omaha, it's true, right? There's only a handful in Omaha that are by residential neighborhoods, and the rest are away from residential neighborhoods.
In your staff report, there was, in Douglas County, there was 11 crematories in Douglas County, and if you look through all those pictures, you would see over half that are around residential.
I disagree with that characterization, not over half. Maybe a third.
That's fine. I do have a bunch of other pictures as well. Again, our company has been designing and building funeral homes and crematories for, since the 1970s, so I can speak that we've done many, many funeral homes in residential areas. A funeral home is typically in a residential area. A funeral home is typically a heart of the community, the center of town, so to speak. That's what a funeral home is.
Yeah, I agree that a funeral home is, but is a crematorium typically? I don't think so, is it?
Well, we've been doing crematories for 30, 40 years. Here's, here's an example of one. So, this is a funeral home in a suburb of north Illinois. So, the funeral director had a crematory in place already, had it in place for about 10, 12 years. Then the developer came in, built a four-story apartment building where literally people in their balconies would look down into the stack. So, then about five years ago, he wanted to put in a pet crematory, so he put it in the stall next to this. No issues, no whatsoever.
The big difference being those people had a choice, because they chose to move in there knowing it was already there, right?
True, true, but the point also being that CNA, Cremationist Society of North America, they've done studies where they've gone around in areas of crematory and residential areas and asked people, "Did you realize the crematory there?" And many, many would say, "No, we did not realize there was one there," because there really isn't an effect of the community with the crematory. Other than a very rare instance, like Mr. Hoy talked about, if.
Just real quick for the public, a little bit of process, we have the public hearing, which is really our time to hear testimony from you, and then after there's a motion on the table to take action, then we have council discussion amongst ourselves and debate. There's always a gray area, council asking questions during a public hearing. Is that discussion, or is it part of the hearing? And so, we're always kind of, we defer to the council to be able to ask questions, but because we have so many people here and they want to say, I think we're going to, unless strongly disagree, I'm going to ask that we hold maybe a lot of the questions to discussion, and we'll go ahead and go on with the public hearing. So, thank you very much. Any other proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? And again, as you come up, if you'd state your name and address for the record, and then I'll give you three minutes, and I'll give you a one-minute warning. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Eric Boy, 608 South Fillmore Street in Papillion. I am the lead pastor of Trinity, and I am here, I apologize if you cannot hear me clearly. This is the last day of my quarantine where I have to wear a mask. Tomorrow, I would be without a mask. Today, I am, because I care about the community. And I care about the 2,000 people who are part of Trinity, most of whom live in this community in Papillion. I care about the hundreds of people that come into our building, and sometimes thousands in the course of a week. Trinity's been in this community for over a century, and in that time, this church has helped feed the community. We have helped clothe the community. We have been there to work and labor and lead in this community because we care about the community. Before we signed anything, we did our due diligence, and the information that we found was very consistent with what I understand is the regulations from our community, our state, and our country. We did not do international research on this. We also did research on the funeral home itself, on Mike Hoy and his group, because it's important to have a funeral home. I know that we don't like to look at the reality, but barring the unforeseen, everybody in here is going to use one at one point or another. And having done hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of funerals, I know how important it is to have a good funeral home in a location where people can get to it, be a part of it, and find the comfort and the hope and the peace that comes from that closure that occurs at a funeral. And I think it is also a blessing with the kids that I've worked with, those at a young age who become aware of the reality of death, have a healthier perspective about death throughout their life. And I know some families are very uncomfortable with that. I have talked to families many, many, many times over the years about that.
One minute.
Excuse me?
One minute.
Thank you.
Can a preacher do that?
Probably not.
That wasn't appropriate, I'm sorry.
No, I get it. Anyway. I think this is a benefit to our community. Funeral homes keep their buildings very nicely, and to have a crematorium attached to the funeral home, as I understand it, about 50% of burials now are cremations, or funerals or cremations. And for families to have the comfort of knowing that their loved one is not being moved around from place to place, but everything is being taken care of respectfully in one place, I think is a blessing. So, I am obviously in support of this for the sake of the community, for the care that it provides, for the support it gives to people in our community, and I believe the other issues in terms of the safety have been well addressed.
Thank you. Any other proponents, those in favor? And I'll also note, any emails or correspondence we got in, those are entered into the record as well, so those are not lost. Any opponents? Welcome.
That would be me, Danny Fudge, 1706 6 Eastview Drive. May I, before my time starts, ask how many emails were received?
It'd probably be an approximate number, but Ms. Brown?
There were approximately 80 to 85 emails.
How many phone calls?
Two.
All right, my name is Danny Fudge. I live at 1706 Eastview Drive. This property has an R3 zoning, which allows for a variety of uses, including assisted living, daycare, some medical offices, retirement, senior living, et cetera. I don't think a special-use permit should be granted for anything else. I want to remind everyone that a crematorium is a biomedical waste incinerator. It is not regulated by the EPA because they do not want to name human remains as solid I have here the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, report effective 3/22/2020. As far as professional occupational licensure for crematoriums, there is nothing in here about regulating what happens in the crematory goes up. It's not in here. I didn't know we could submit packets, or I would give you that. The proximity to homes in Walnut Creek Elementary School should make this permit for special use a non-starter. The environmental impact to our children at home and school should have a high priority for their safety and health to our city. According to Dr. John Kenning of the Air Quality Division Permitting Section of the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality, their regulated pollutants.
Just in, I want to interrupt you just real quick, just in case anybody cares. We are under a thunderstorm warning. I don't think it's here yet, and we got people monitoring the weather, and we've got a safety plan, but I just want to let people know that in case you got something else you need to take care of. No. Go ahead.
Okay, if I could have your attention.
Sorry about that. Thought somebody might care.
No, and I would do the same thing in my congregation. The Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality says they have regulated pollutant emissions, a particulate matter, this is from crematoriums in Nebraska, four tons per year. Sulfur dioxide, 1.9 tons per year. Nitrogen oxide, 3.12 tons per year. Carbon monoxide, 2.58 tons per year. Volatile organic compounds, who knows what that is, .26 tons per year. Hazardous air pollutants, including hydrogen chloride, 2.38 tons per year for crematorium. And that is from Dr. John Jenny of the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. So, I'm just giving you facts. Now, I'll give you an opinion. The safety of our children while walking and riding bicycles on Gold Coast Road should be considered above any financial gain to a city or an entity. The traffic at 90th Street and Gold Coast Road is congested enough at this point. With school in session, funeral traffic would impede and make the area around the school unsafe. Thirdly, the decline in homeowners' property value for the surrounding neighborhoods should be considered by the elected council members. Living close to a funeral home, crematorium, or cemetery can have a negative impact on a home's value, according to data from Trulia.
One minute.
Houses, and this, and the next one is from money.cnn.com. Houses in the south and midwest that are near cemeteries, funeral homes, and crematoriums tend to have the biggest difference in value, according to them. The planning commission heard the outcry from the neighborhood. They voted nine to zero not to recommend this special-use permit to this out-of-state company. Please hear us tonight, and don't pass this special-use permit.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Mark Gordon, 1605 Ridgeway Drive, Payton, Nebraska, 68046. I was actually going to bring up recusal. I appreciate the gentleman speaking up to start out with. The business operation statement of WC Investment that I saw, it states they are heavily regulated by the EPA. From my understanding, that in itself is a falsehood. The EPA has taken a hands-off approach towards crematoria and has turned regulatory controls over to states and municipalities. As a result, this is a largely self-regulating industry. If you try looking up information on the topic, a lot of the stuff that you find comes immediately out of cremationassociation.org. You have to dig a little bit deeper, and it's not that hard to find more information, but that's the first step that pops up. Why does this industry need to be in an established neighborhood and not in a light industrial location just a few miles away? As I understand it, a special-use permit is designed to allow an entity to operate in an area for which they would normally be banned from operating due to municipal zonings, and in this case, for very good reason. We're definitely looking for a no vote on the resolution itself. The need for a special-use permit is because this operation is not a residential operation. It is more closely related to industrial. Mayor Black stated, and I quote, "Papillion is a great place to live, work, and play. In fact, our city has been ranked as high as number two among small cities in Money Magazine's Best Places to Live." A vote in support of this resolution will definitely put a wedge in future statements of that nature. My wife is extremely proud of living in this area as I am. She asked me to hold up the magazines, Money Magazine. She's been saving stuff on Papillion since 2007. We hope by the end of this meeting that we'll feel the same about being proud of living in Papillion, and that our distress over this issue will no longer be valid or affect our decision as to our place of residence. One of the things I would like to directly address as far as the mercury goes.
One minute.
A British Columbia study shows that 1.2 grams of mercury is released, on the average, for each individual that is cremated. And that's because of the fact that a filling is up to 50% mercury, and a Malcolm filling that's in your mouth, and I'm pretty sure every single one of us has some of those in our mouths, it's up to 50% mercury. So, that mercury's got to go somewhere. And if it's being vaporized and being dumped into the atmosphere, it's got to come down somewhere. It's a heavy metal. It doesn't just float up into the atmosphere and go burn up in space somewhere. It comes back down to earth somewhere.
Time, thank you.
Sir, just a second, sir.
Mr. Mungard.
I have a question. Okay, there's now been two references to this British Columbia study by Councilman Sunday and by you now. And I'm looking at that study, and it says on page five, "Conclusion: Mercury from crematoriums accounts for more than 7% of total mercury emissions to the atmosphere in B.C." True, it says that. It also cites all those numbers that you just told us. The sentence goes on to say, "But risk assessment found no indication that ground-level exposures to elemental mercury vapor from crematoriums poses a significant risk to human health." That seems to be different than what you're saying. Now, can you try to reconcile that? If you read the whole paragraph with the whole sentence, it says the vapor that you're talking about poses a... There's no evidence that it poses a significant risk to human health. How do you reconcile that?
Another study that I read, unfortunately I didn't bring notes on it, so I can't state exactly what it was, but a very common statement that a lot of people use is a half teaspoon of mercury is enough to poison a lake. And I sit there thinking, that sounds silly. Mercury's heavy, it's gonna go to the bottom. The equivalent of a half teaspoon of mercury, okay, is a solid liquid, or the metal mercury is not the same thing as an atmospheric mercury, which is what we receive from the cremation, because the mercury is vaporized. The poisoning of the lake is actually taken over a year's period, and it's continuous dumping of the atmospheric mercury into the lake that poisons the fish that everybody is running around eating. You take the ocean as an example. Your tuna is one of the highest fish that have mercury in their system. It's pretty common knowledge. And the reason that is, is because the tuna eat smaller fish that eat smaller fish that eat smaller fish. So, it's a big cycle. When it gets into the environment, it continues to cycle back through and cycle back through, and it just keeps coming back till eventually we end up eating the tuna. So, the mercury that is vaporized floats up into the sky from stacks, and then it comes down in our neighborhoods, in our water where our kids are playing, in our trees, yards. It's tracked back in with you whenever you go into your house and then come back out. When it rains, a fault comes off of your roof, comes off of your trees, right down into your yards. So, I'm hoping to get this kind of analogy answered your question as to what the concern is, because it's gotta go somewhere. Matter does not disappear. Matter is matter, and you're not gonna change what it is. You might change what it looks like, but you're not changing basically what it is. So, if they don't collect mercury out of the crematorium, where's the mercury going?
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Thank you, Jason Lemon, 1506 Ridgeview Drive. I live directly west of the proposed site. I am a strong opponent to this, as eighty-three other people out of the eighty-five or so that you heard from, the numbers are overwhelming, majority from the people in this community and the neighborhood saying, no. It's not wanted in our neighborhood. It's loud and clear. You have had all the opportunity in the world to hear the overwhelming majority of people who you represent say, no. It's not close. All this technology that he talks about in the funeral company, and he's gonna sit here and tell me, tell us all that they couldn't draw smokestacks on some floor plans, that was one of the only documents that was made available to the public to see. No smokestacks, no crematorium. I took AutoCAD about twenty-five years ago, and I can tell you it's a real quick fix. Twenty-five years ago, it was a real quick fix. And with all due respect to the council members, there is a conflict of interest, even if you don't feel like there is. It's not about your integrity, it's just perception of the conflict of interests that it does exist. That's not debatable. So, I kindly ask you to recuse yourself from voting in this matter. Thirdly, there are zero crematoriums in Sarpy County in residential neighborhoods. Zero. Do not make my neighborhood the first. The planning committee voted nine to nothing unanimously to say no because they heard our voice. Please do the same. If you vote yes for this measure, you're taking the convenience of a mortuary company over the needs of the people, the wants and the desires of the people. You're taking the convenience of what they're saying over what the profit is what this is about. It's more convenient for them to make it happen, it's more profitable for them to have a crematorium at the same location. It's easier. Their convenience is not more important than the overwhelming majority of people to say no to this measure.
One minute.
Please say no. There's eighty-three to eighty-five, there's no reason. And I would love to hear a reason from any proponent, other than financial gain, why this is happening, why this is even making it nine to nothing. Thank you.
Sir, second, I got a question. You raised something that I think needs to be put out there. You're talking about the majority of the neighborhood doesn't want it, and the wants and desires of the people, we're supposed to follow the wants and desires of those people. Here's part of the other side of the coin. The pastor boy told us that there are 2,000 members of the congregation of that church, most of them living in Papillion, as he said. I'm fully aware of many, many members of that church who live in my ward. Expect me to represent them. And they, through their leadership, have decided that they can, that it's okay to have this funeral home as their neighbor, the church's neighbor. I guess I sit here and say, where am I supposed to go then if I'm following the wants and desires of the people? Do I go to the neighborhood? Or do I go to that congregation of people who live in Papillion? Vote for me or anybody else. Where do I go?
Is your ward in the proposed site? Are all those people, do you know if they live in the neighborhood proposed? Do you have data to show that?
I know that some of those 2,000, I take it that the pastor knows where the people live, and he says most of the 2,000 live in Papillion. I say throughout Papillion. If they're telling me by way of their leadership that they want this funeral home there, how am I supposed to ignore that?
They want to sell the land. They want the profit from the money, and their financial reports from last year will show it. Without the PPP loans, they'd be in a lot of trouble.
Thank you. The Lutherans there are just grubby, money-grubber people. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think that's getting off...
Integrity and recusing yourself would be a good move.
Yeah, I think we're getting, I think we're getting off topic. Next, welcome.
I'm Mike Lewis, I live at 543 North Washington, on the other side of town. I am a professional meteorologist and climatologist, and I want to address the potential of the emissions from this particular site. During the wintertime, prevailing winds in Papillion are from the west through north. So, from the east through the south would be the downwind area from this particular site. That includes two elementary schools, that includes a hospital, and a major shopping center within two miles. In the summertime, the wind blows from the west through the north. And that includes a substantial part of the old part of Papillion, and four elementary schools, two junior highs, and a high school three miles away. In that area also is a substantial part of the older residential area of Papillion. I live in a home that's over a hundred years old, just at 6th and Washington Street. And we have homes from my age down, a lot of them built in the sixties and seventies, that would be in the downwind path of these emissions. So, in, basically, we are opposed to having that kind of emission in our area, and I recommend that you do not vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Ms. Sharon Holder. I live at 1904 Barrington Parkway in Papillion. I'd like to thank the Papillion Planning Committee for listening to the residents of Papillion on not recommending a special use permit for the company WC Investment to bear funeral home crematorium facility at the previous meeting, and the proposed area across the street from the Walnut Creek Elementary School, daycare facilities, and highly populated residential neighborhoods. I want to be sensitive and respectful to those who may need to choose to cremate their loved ones, remains. As we all know, we all must go, from this life into eternity, ready or not. We are a loving, we are to lovingly handle our loved ones' remains. And what matter of fashion that those remains are to be handled is an individual choice during an emotional and can-be challenging time for those that are left behind. I have been a registered nurse for thirty-one years, most of that time serving our precious geriatric souls. I give this back so that you can understand where my position and my views are coming from. Those people who provide us service to dispose of our remains at the end of our earthly life, whether it be burial or cremation, are healthcare workers unknown until we need them, but yet essential part of the process of death. Thank you, mortuary workers. With that being said, our concerns are, of course, the heavy metals, numerous types of emission will become a part of our immediate environment. It is my understanding the proposed facility will have two crematoriums. Do we know how many chambers each of the crematoriums will have? That all will equate to how many precious remains are cremated and at, how many at one time, which brings me back to our community's concerns of toxins in our environment. In addition to the proposed location will generate more traffic at the congested intersection on the corner of Nineth, South Nineth Street and Highway 370.
One minute.
Cremation services are in demand. They typically cost less than a grave or mausoleum burial. COVID-19 pandemic, it's not yet a thing of the past, and it could happen again. Did we forget the pictures around our country and other countries that could not even keep up with cremation or burials? The known proposal facility will have a lasting impact now and into future, the future that we cannot see. But what we can see is the need, and we need to see it built in one of the many beautiful available commercial locations, not located near our neighborhood or our homes we live in till the rest of our lives until we meet our maker. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Holly Vale. I have 1011 Valley View Drive in Papillion. I just want to start off by saying I have been in Papillion for over forty years. That ages me, I know, but I didn't want to tell you exactly how many, but... So, I have never come in front of the city board before. I have not agreed with things that have been decided by the, you know, city board. This one, though, this is the help of myself, my children, and potentially my grandchildren. Because truly, it's not the funeral home itself, I mean, do I want it there? No. Do I think it's gonna affect the traffic? I do. I don't know if you sat at that stop sign over there. But... When I moved here into Walnut Creek Hills, it was twenty years ago, and I asked this specific question about what was that land gonna be used for? It was the archdiocese, Catholic archdiocese. I was told that it was going to be a church. And so, I was okay with that. And I'm not naive to think that over twenty years that things aren't going to change. I get that. And then about it could be zoned for something else. And, but it was a Lutheran church, so I felt comfortable with that. But at this point, if this, if this is approved, I have no choice to protect my family than to move. I wasn't given the opportunity to say, oh, this is a crematorium, and I don't want to live by that. I don't want to take that chance. My questions are, who financially benefits from this decision? If there are these individuals that have wrote emails, and we've gone to, I've gone to the planning committee, and it was full. I'm here today, and it's full. Now, maybe there are individuals here that have not stood up and said why they want to have it outside of that them and one person, and you, I know.
One minute.
But you had talked about insignificant findings. That doesn't mean none. That means insignificant. There was a study that was published in March 2020 by the National Collaboration Center for Environmental Health. It said they couldn't find studies on the health effects of this, but they found one, and it was for stillborns, that they saw an increase. There was discussion also about an allowed amount. If we don't have that information, if you cannot promise me, if you cannot look me in the face today and tell me, I guarantee that there is no way that these emissions, that in twenty years from now, that I'm not gonna have problems. If you can't promise me that, please, I beg you not to approve this.
Time. Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Thank you. Amy Volkman, 822 Lake Tahoe Drive. I wasn't planning on speaking, so bear with me. I just want to let you guys know, I work very closely with researchers in the area of health and nutrition. And when you brought up, I think, the line about not being able to see any health detriments that was in the study, yeah, a lot of times that, because doing long-term health effects, especially from environmental sources, is really hard to study, it's something that's gonna be really hard for them to find out right now. It's going to take a while, it's gonna take many years, it's gonna take money. People that are opposed to it don't have the money, the people that are for it are gonna have the money to do those kinds of researches. So, if you have something that talks about no health detriments over a period of thirty, forty, fifty years of being that close to a crematorium, I'd be interested in hearing that. The one thing that I did see and did notice is a lot of times the crematoriums are put in communities with less resources. So, the people that live there have less resources, that also challenges some of the research that would be done there. I know in my neighborhood, right, I work in healthcare, I've got teachers around me, people in law enforcement, those are the people in this community. And then to do this is essentially feeling like you guys are saying, out of Papillion, this is our community with less resources. So, I just want you to think about that, that even though we aren't the people that can be on the golf course rubbing elbows or making deals, we are the ones that are serving the community, and we are not your less resources people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Monty Evans. I live at 1912 Diane Drive. I'm in SID 244. We're not in part of Papillion, but we're in the zoning. And I hope you listen to us as if we were members of the community, because I believe we are. One of the things that one of the earlier speakers brought up was that he was in favor of a funeral home there. I don't have a huge disagreement with a funeral home being there, it wouldn't be my first choice, but I don't think that's what the majority of us are speaking about. We're talking about a crematorium along with a funeral home. An architectural software that can't show smokestacks. I almost want to laugh at that statement, because it's ridiculous. Another statement was, not much comes out of the crematorium smokestack. How can you say that when you hear how many tons of VOCs, nitrous oxide, all these different chemicals in the Canadian study were listed? And how can you say not much comes out of a smokestack? And then with pride says, in another city, we built one where the smokestack was only ten feet away from the apartment building. Really? This scares the heck out of me, that you could say that with pride. And we're talking about homes that are 300 feet, 500 feet, half a mile. And the winds, I'm glad a professional meteorologist brought this up, because I'm not, but I know that the winds come out of the north and the west, and they're gonna blow right into our house. Crematorium accidents were dismissed as not relevant tonight due to new technology. We don't have any proof of that either. Crematorium accidents happen, and they happened in Council Bluffs ten years ago, as was stated. But they can't happen again because of new technology. I don't believe that.
One minute.
There were several non-answers and usually's in defense of the crematorium. And I can't take that as an argument. It usually doesn't happen. The ethanol plant in Mead... The ethanol plant in Mead usually was going to work. We all know how that turned out. I don't want to be on the wrong side of this. We can't guess with our health. We have to be proactive and vote on the right side and on the safe side. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Francine Borkowski. I live in the neighborhood of thirteen ten Western Hills Drive very proudly. When I heard this on the news tonight, normally my bedtime is at seven o'clock, but that woke me up because I raised two children with asthma. It was so comforting to know I had the doctor's home number to reach. I'm retired from the University of Nebraska Medical Center very proudly. Worked in the lab. Certain nights, they had to burn the crematory. Other remains. My results were headache, eyes running, and I didn't know what was going on until my nose got nosy. I was very uncomfortable. No, I didn't live in the neighborhood, which I'm very happy about. But this, this, this is strictly a no vote on my part. I've only lived there eleven years very proudly. I do not want this to pass. I do not want this to pass. When we even get the atmosphere all ready and we can't hardly go outside without breathing, this is another plus. And as we get older, yes, we must become more proactive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jan Sanderson, eighteen oh five South Fillmore, Papillion. Crematoriums, yes, are necessary. Funeral homes are necessary. But this is an area that has built up over very long history. It's taken longer for this area to develop than some of the other areas in Papillion. And several years ago, when Walnut Hills Creek subdivision was designed, the developer asked for R three zoning for the entire development. And at that time, it was the recommendation, not only of the planning commission, but the government, excuse me, the staff, the planning staff, to ask that applicant to minimize or to make some decisions where they wanted R three so that the rest of the subdivision could be R two. And they were agreeable to this and made decisions to put the R three next to Highway three seventy. The fact that the staff in their stack report has said that R three is directly west is correct, but directly north, south, and east is R two development. Directly, uh, I'm sorry, directly east is a light commercial area. And that area has had problems developing. We now have a nice little shopping center over there and a few other kinds of businesses, and we would like to see that develop again as a buffer area between the R two residential that exists in that quarter section and the highway. I think this project is a double crematorium with a funeral home attached. The fact that they say in the materials that they are planning to have maybe four funeral home functions tells me that the main purpose of this facility is a crematorium. And there are a lot of other, less developed sites in our jurisdiction and the other jurisdictions in Sarpy County where a crematorium could be located. This area has built up of residents that their primary investment is the house they own and the land it sits on. And we relied on that comprehensive plan to say that this was going to be a nice neighborhood area. So now, I believe the planning staff is using some small chunks of, I don't want to use the term spot zoning, because we all know that's a bad word, but some areas of lesser zoning to put this crematorium right next to R two zoning. The fact that the neighborhoods are built up on three corners of that area.
One minute.
And the Trummel Park area is developing now. I really don't think this is the proper place for this function. In R two funeral services or funeral facilities are not even permitted. So the fact that you're just looking at the R three, I think you're doing a disservice to every one of the residents here that have invested their lives and their wherewithal in the Papillion community in this area. Thank you.
I think. Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, you've been involved in planning for quite some time, so I'm going to ask you.
I believe it was over fifteen years.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you this question.
And prior to that, and legal work in this area too.
Okay, okay. I understand what you're saying about the R three, R two. But looking directly, specifically at this lot where the church is and, and the funeral homes proposed, you go back to two thousand and one, none of that area was developed, and it came in to be platted.
We planted that, yes.
Yes. And that big, big corner was platted with the representation that the Omaha Archdiocese was going to buy that or had bought that and was going to put a church and school there.
Very correct.
Okay, that was, that was two thousand and one. And, and as I looked up, I looked it up, and none of the houses got built until two thousand and two and later. And, and so the archdiocese had plans to build a sizable church and school there up and, up until a few, a few years ago.
I've done work with the archdiocese. I've actually worked at Catholic cemeteries, and, um, I, there was good intentions at that time.
Well, here's one looking, I'm looking specifically at traffic. It seems to me from the very beginning, that corner was envisioned as being a high-traffic producing corner. You know, you, you just have to go over by Columkill, and you'll see high traffic. So I say if, if, if they were going to build a bigger church and school there than we have in, in Columkill, it was going to be a high-traffic area.
I'm not contending a traffic difference, sir.
Okay.
I'm contending the use difference and the fact that the residents that rely on you to protect their interests are very concerned, and.
Yeah, at the moment, I'm just looking at the traffic issues.
Thank you.
So I'm trying to reconcile it.
Thank you.
I'm Norm Schessler, thirty-two oh five Pleasant Drive in Bellevue. And the reason I'm here is I've been a member of the church for more than you can remember. But anyway, I just wanted to ask a few questions of the builders in here. Are there emission standards by the state or?
The, um, just a point, a point of reference, public hearing is for us to take testimony, not as much for question and answer. But if you want to ask your questions, we get them on the record, and then maybe a council member can follow up in the discussion.
I want to know if there's standards by the state. Are these built? Are these crematoriums built according to those standards? And who will monitor those standards?
We'll get those questions into the record.
Get that up to the city, and I was just wondering, has the fire department been aware of this? And are they in favor? Or, ah, okay.
Thank you very much. Just so I can monitor time, how many others plan to testify? Okay, thanks. No, no, but we're, we're doing next testimony. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amanda Sanders. I live at nine oh three Edgewater Drive. I've lived in Papillion for twenty years, and my house was built in two thousand and six. My husband and I think every penny we had into that house so our daughter could go to a good school. I know that a lot of issues have been brought up, and you've already heard them, but, you know, a couple of things on my, my list were the, the biohazard, the traffic, property values, and I know that you've already listened to that. So just a couple of things, uh, you know, I do understand that the church has planned this for a while, and that's all well and good, but maybe they should adapt their plans based on the response from the community that they serve. Perhaps you can build your funeral home and build it close to the church. I think your church is beautiful. And then build the crematorium in a more industrial location. That is, if you drive anywhere between a hundred and eighth and a hundred and twentieth and Giles, you will see plenty of lots for sale close to laboratories and warehouses and semi-truck places and whatnot. And it is actually closer to the interstate. I don't see why it would be a big, uh, conflict to perhaps separate the two. Also, I would really like for that property, I mean, if, if you can't adjust your plans according to what the community wants, there's a number of other things I'd like to see in that spot. I would love to see a senior community center, an assisted living facility where I can put my mom. I would love to see a condo prorated for veterans, first responders, nurses, and teachers who work across the street. My daughter goes to that school, and she plays outside. I garden, and I have my veg beds, and I feel safe in my community right now, but I don't think that this is a good idea. Now, I know that this was previously cited by another person, but the National Collaborative Center for Environmental Health, um, you know, they did state that the level exposure for these pollutants caused by crematoria has not been widely studied. I understand that, but just because it was not studied does not mean it is not significant. They said that about lead in the nineteen forties. And Dr. Cameron Patterson devoted his life to research so that he could prove what he knew was wrong.
One minute.
So I won't talk to you about organic pollutants and all the stuff that I'm sure you already know, but it does definitely accumulate in, in humans and fine particle matter. The World Health Organization and our EPA advises that care should, that care should be taken to limit exposure, particularly vulnerable populations such as babies, children, pregnant women, and elderly. And that is your community, and I'm asking you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Penny Fudge. I live at seventeen oh six East Free Drive.
Can you pull the microphone down just a little bit? Thank you.
Are you saying I'm short?
Thank you.
This gentleman has encouraged us to talk facts, so let's talk facts. Uh, when we first heard about this, uh, I'm one of the lucky ones to live within three hundred yards of this thing. My husband first contacted the pastor of the church, and the pastor informed him, this was before the planning committee. He said, we are under contract. You're welcome to your opinion, but it's pretty much a done deal. We are under contract with this property, which just surprised us. So then we thought, okay, we don't want this, so what are we going to do? So we started telling our neighbors, and so we, and, and so we thought, well, what do we do? Well, we're in an SID. Quick sidebar here. When I first moved to Nebraska, I wanted to know who Sid was and why he was involved in everything, but I've since learned it's an SID. And as such, yeah, I know, go ahead and laugh, I'm from the south, you know I don't know what I'm doing. But when I first, but when we first, we thought, well, let's call our SID president. His response was, well, if it doesn't concern the sewer, we're neutral. So we thought, okay, no help there. So then we called Mr. Mumgarth, thinking he was our city councilman. We have since found out that although you have control over our neighborhood, we have no city councilmen, so of course, you can't vote for us because, you know, you don't serve us. I will find it interesting that this is the gentleman that has argued the most with people that are talking tonight. We feel like we're, you know, trying to defend ourselves against a councilman that's a church member, but anyway. As for this special use permit, I got to tell you, we don't want it. It seems to me like you have a responsibility to vote on the side of big money or vote on the side of people who live and, and love this community. We, we don't want this thing. We, we have voiced our opinion as much as we can. I will tell you what their operation statement says. It says, because of the unpredictable nature, when death occurs, there will be traffic at the facility twenty-four hours, seven days a week. There will be two crematoriums on site that would operate from the hours of eight to five P M. These will be the first units in Sarpy County, so it will be hard to predict the amount of use. However, we would not be surprised if there's an average of twenty cremations per week. A cremation typically lasts two hours. So we're talking burning people in my neighborhood forty hours a week. Would you want that for your neighborhood? I think not.
One minute.
Thank you. You know, I, I don't understand why we're, really why we're even here, other than the church wants to sell this property, but they act like this is our only option. When I spoke to church members, the only ones that I can honestly hand to heart say, the only people that were against this were, there were three people in our community that, in our neighborhood that I spoke with. One of the church members told me, and Mr. Mumgarth told my husband, I'm for it. I think it would be a great thing for my church. And he also told my husband, well, we turned down a, a, a gas station. Well, thank you, I think. But do you know what the church member told me? Well, our church has already decided this is good for our church. Would you rather us put a strip club or a bar there? Those are our options, guys. Let's keep, this is our neighborhood. This isn't some, this is where I live. This is where my grandbabies play. And I'm not a professional meteorologist, but I can tell you, two days ago, or three days ago, I was blowing bubbles in the front yard with my three-year-old, and he had to run like a gazelle to catch those bubbles. So I know wind is a factor. It's not just going to affect me. It's going to affect everybody. And you know, in your heart of hearts, you cannot burn people, and it doesn't have, and it doesn't have any effect. And another thing, one of my neighbors said, he is an environmental, um, what do you call him, engineer? And he says, yes, they put, they might put filters in, although this guy can't even find the smokestacks, blows my mind. But he says that they put in, when they put in filters, if they put in filters, and he said, I thought I heard him say tonight, no filters, but they said that if you put in filters, eventually they will break down, and nobody fixes them.
Time.
One of the planning committee members said, they drove past a crematorium, thought it was a building on fire, and called the fire department. And that's what one of the planning members said. He said there was so much black smoke billowing out of that crematorium that he called the fire depart, or he was going to call the fire department until somebody said, no, that's a crematorium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Harold Holder. I live at nineteen oh four Barrington Parkway with that beautiful black lady back there that's my wife for thirty-eight years. I just have a couple of questions. I, she hit on it. I was a little disappointed that you could not show us a complete drawing of all the stacks that are going to be there, okay? I ain't even going to go there. But the thing is, and I'm just going to say this and, and be, be clear, you all know the best-laid plans have flaws. And who is going to be responsible for it? You know, we're going to be right back here in a year. How long's it going to take to build this thing? I don't know. But if they build it, but we'll be right back here complaining that, hey, we told you so, councilmen and ladies. So I'm just saying this to you all. It's not about wondering if you're going to get reelected. You know as well as I do, it's gonna, it, it's never, it never works like it planned, like it's planned. Like I said, someone mentioned the plate, uh, the plant down there in Mead, I think? That's where it is? Wherever it is. Look at what we got down there. I'm sure that was laid out perfectly too. So I'm just saying to you, it's a simple, you know, this thing could be over. The majority of the people say no, and that's where we need to leave it. Plus, I, I, just one last thing, you shouldn't have let a preacher up here. One last thing, there's some more development that's going to be over there in that area, isn't there? I don't know if it's going to be apartments. I've heard it's going to be apartments or whatever. There's going to be more people over there. Guess where? Like I said, and I do know, just like my aunt said, I got flags in the yard, and the wind always comes across, well, actually, across this way, that would be west, northwest. So we're going to have ourselves a great little smell. But anyway, I just saying is, hey, look, you need to come, you need to bring your A game, man, because you don't even know how many stacks we're going to have, and then this thing is going to get built, and then we're going to be stuck with it. I say we vote no. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Chuck Barnes, 921 Rawhide Road. Um, I heard a couple of things from, uh, Councilman Mumgarth about the church. And who does he, who do you represent? The church or do you represent the people that elected you? You didn't have to answer that question.
Well, this isn't a question and answer time, it's time to take testimony.
Well, I just wanted to know that, that, that's what I heard come out of his mouth, that he was more for the church than he was for his constituents. Sorry, a little nervous here.
Oh, it's fine.
I have one more item. Anyway, I'll just, I agree with the other gentleman that talked about the stacks and they couldn't provide it because their computer stuff doesn't do that. I don't know what computers they're using, maybe from the 60s or something, I don't know, but that is, uh, unacceptable. And I don't want this thing in the neighborhood, 'cause I live over near it and I'd appreciate if you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I'll answer your question. God, I wanna, I don't want him to say that. I do not represent the church. I feel I should represent people who live in my district, who have voted for me, who have supported me, who I agree with, and they happen to be members of the church. That's it.
Okay, that's not what I understood what you said, but, thank you.
Next.
Hi, how you all doing? Uh, my name is Derek Cassu and I live at 1010 Clearwater Drive. Um, I will tell you that I didn't really prepare to sn- talk tonight, um, but, you know, some of the things, you know, I was a little bit disturbed, you know, in, in hearing about this when I first, when I started reading up on it a little bit. Um, I come from a technical background, you know, um, and, and it disturbs me that actually, when we're talking technical aspects that Steve was able to bring up, that they couldn't talk about it, that they, that they didn't have any information on that. And I find that hard to believe when that's their, excuse me, when that's their job, you know? And, and here they are presenting before, before us, you know, what this is going to be, but yet they can't talk to it. Um, you know, there's a lot of people in that area. There's a lot of people that have talked here. I don't know if I'm able to do this or not, and I'll ask permission, if I can ask, you know, people to raise their hand if they, if they are against this, because I'm not sure everybody's gonna be able to talk, and I think it'd be good for people to see who's against this in the room. Is that okay with you?
We'll get it through the meeting.
What, what's that?
Uh, we'll get it towards the end of the meeting.
Okay, I appreciate it.
If there's others that aren't, don't wanna speak.
What's that?
If there's others that don't wanna speak, we'll get an indication.
I, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Um, I mean, you know, as, as I look at this too, you know, I mean, there, there's indications when we're talking about the church, you know, that's there in the, in the congregants and, you know, um, I'm not sure, how many people did you say go there?
About 2,000 people that recognize this church.
Okay, and, and, you know, it sounds like, you know, there's people that are for that at the church, you know? Um, I'm not, I'm not against, you know, a, a crematorium, I'm not against, you know, having a funeral home, just in that area, I think it's wrong. I, I think there's other places to be able to put that. Um, when we talk about people that are going to church there, I go to church in my own, my own church as well. Um, I don't spend, you know, 40 hours a week at my church.
One minute.
Or however much, you know, however much time there. I mean, at my home, I do spend a lot of time there, um, especially with working from home. And, you know, it's, you know, it's tough when we're, when we're kinda talking about putting something in place, you know, and, and the people and the kids that are, that are actually at that school, you know, it's really something we need to think about, you know? And I really appreciate you letting me come up here and talk, um, and, you know, I, I really hope you guys vote no for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Adam Friedland, 1708 Eastview Drive. If we're just talking about the facts, sorry, I don't know your name, I'll call you Mr. W.C. Uh, you lied about your software not showing the smoke stacks, it's a lie. You also mentioned about Burger King putting stuff out in the air. I'm a bit of a fat boy at heart, when I go by Burger King and I smell that, that smells good to me, I wanna eat it. I don't wanna eat anybody's body or smell anybody's body or see any hot smoke vapors that we will see in the wintertime from crematorium. Just calling it how it is. Um, Mr. Mumgarth, I believe you went on the record with the news, and I think you did lie when you said that the EPA regulates this. Not a question that I think you need to answer now unless you want to, but I'm not trying to give everybody this time up. You say you represent 2,000 people or your constituents in your area. I, I don't see them here. I don't see any of them here, they're saying that they want this built. And I would say that the reason they aren't is because this affects us more than it affects them. We pay a premium to live in Papillion. If I wanted to live in a lesser city, I would go over to Omaha and live next one of the funeral homes that I passed on Saturday. It's not a nice area, it's not bad, but it's not Papillion. When I lived down in Kansas City, I worked for a company that owned a pet crematorium. They had to move the location, proposed location, two times out of two different cities to a third city to get it away from schools and other residential areas. As for pets, something to think about. I'm sure the pastor is a great guy, I'm not going to in any way, shape or form insult him or degrade him in any ways. Before this was even considered, when the church was first built, I had tried to call him multiple times on a separate matter, never heard a, a phone call back from him. Sure he's busy. But if they really cared about the neighborhood, why didn't they ask any of the neighbors?
One minute.
When you talked about the reality of death, if I wanna teach my kids about death, I'll take them to the backyard and they'll see the rabbits that get in my garden and they can see the full circle of life right there. My last statement is, what is the duty of the council to the citizens of this city? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Name is Nick Glessinger. Live at 1911 Southview Drive, Boy, Nebraska. I am here tonight to talk in opposition of this. Uh, I, to give a little bit of background, I've been a paramedic for nine years, a firefighter for 14, a volunteer over here for three prior to going to Omaha. So I know a little bit about smoke and a little bit of all the carcinogens and all the extra stuff that's in the smoke. As we said earlier, if you walk by Burger King, you can smell all that food getting cooked up, you're breathing smoke. Along, in that smoke is all the stuff you can't breathe and that's the stuff that kills firemen and kills most people in a house fire. They don't die from the fire, they don't die from the high heat, they die from all the smoke inhalation and all the stuff in that smoke. Just because we put all this stuff to make it nice and clean and look nice and, you know, whatever it takes to bring it up to high-tech specs, you're still gonna be breathing this stuff. Some of the stuff just cannot burn off. I mean, the sun's the only thing I can think of, and even then it's got iron in its core. Putting this in a residential neighborhood would just be a terrible idea. You're putting this in with houses that are designed and built for single-family residences with new families, little kids, very susceptible to any of this stuff. Years and years ago, we had lead in cars, we had lead in all kinds of stuff. And everybody said it was fine, it was fine, you know, the EPA, it's great, it's great, it works great. We found out it's terrible. We got rid of it. Then we started putting catalytic converters on our vehicles, 'cause we found even more bad stuff than that stuff. All we've got is lead out.
One minute.
And now we've got stuff on diesel trucks to help break up more of that. The point I'm trying to make is, just because we say it's safe right now, in 10, 15, 20 years from now, it might not be safe. Help me protect my son. Help me make sure that he has a great chance here at Papillion. Do not let the taking care of the dead interfere with the living's problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello. My name is Aaron Rathman, 1513 Ridgeview Drive, Papillion, Nebraska, 68046. Um, my area of expertise is physical, industrial and information security. I'm certified as such. So I'm used to debt, I'm used to getting through thousands and thousands of pages of documentation for the US government. In this case, I spent some time looking through thousands and thousands of pages of documentation for this matter. She mentioned the National Canadian Center for Environmental Health. They list the amounts of mercury and volatile organic compounds and radioactive iodine 131 that breaks up and gets dropped on the ground from patients that have gone through chemotherapy. No one's, no one's mentioned that tonight. Mercury, 1.1, 1.2 grams per body, that's 80 pounds over the lifetime of a crematorium, according to the Journal of Canadian, uh, Canadian Journal of Health. 80 pounds per stack. That will come down within 400 meters to 1,600 meters of those stacks based on wind. Not like it's windy here in Nebraska. That is an unacceptable amount of emissions, as does the National Canadian Center of Health state that the levels exceeded their national tolerances for emissions. The distance to that elementary school is illegal to have these stacks within, is illegal at the distance they're at, 154 meters to their-
One, one minute.
To their playground. It is legal to be that close in five different countries. Please, don't put one here because we're not looking at those regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Anybody else? Welcome.
I'm Latisha Rackman, 1513 Ridgeview Drive, Papillion, Nebraska, 68046. I would like to let you know, the only reason I know about this is because I had a flyer. Now, your allowance is a certain distance, but this truly affects a whole neighborhood. It affects people who have children that go to that elementary school. There would be so many more people to come here and tell you, "This is not acceptable. This is not a good thing to put in our community." You're correct, sir. It is very important to have these options. We're not saying a funeral home is a bad thing. It is what is going in this funeral home. My father was cremated, so I know about this because I looked into it, but the cremation place I chose was in an industrial area, because I would never have thought to put the ashes of my father potentially could be blown through the stack. They can't guarantee that it's not. All they can tell you is this is what they think happens, or this is what is supposed to happen. I'm asking you, please, I know, sir, Mr. Mumgarth, you said you're, you're acting upon your, your constituents, but Walnut Creek Hills did not know about this. We couldn't come and tell you, "We do not want this," because we did not know about it, because we did not live within a stone's throw of this neighborhood, of, of what's happening. So please, consider this. We don't want it, neither should you. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Anya Young, 12220 South, 78th Street. First I want to say that the two gentlemen that are with the church really should separate themselves from the voting as they are tied and want the best interest of their church, um, and they really should not be voting tonight. Um, second, I wanna say, we have three mortuaries within 15 minutes of this building. There's also cremation already center close, we don't need another one. There, I haven't heard anyone talk about that there are possibilities. Maybe the church would wanna do funerals there too. Um, that might be a way to raise money. Um, also, he commented about the emissions and how, um, they are similar to fireplaces. Um, first of all, a body being burned, depending on size, is a minimum of one and a half hours, up to five hours for an adult. So we're past 40 hours, for sure. Um, each body for carbon dioxide, um, produces 534.6 pounds of carbon dioxide. An electric fireplace, four pounds. That's really a big difference. That is not a fireplace. Um, also, the children, elementary school, they're outside playing, they're breathing it. The church has a preschool there, five days a week, you have little kids right there, you have the traffic. I, like it's been said, there, I don't see 2,000 members of the church here saying, "We want this," 'cause they don't. And I and my neighbors didn't even know about the first meeting of this. Many of them were unable to attend as they have things with their children. We don't want this. As you look around, we don't want this for Papillion. This isn't what Papillion is, we're better. And I just really hope you listen to everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Teresa Clark and I live at 1333 Scott Road, here in Papillion, with my husband, and we have lived in that same house since we moved in in 1986. And eventually bought that house, and we're still there. And the problem with some of the things that are being said is, number one, like the lady just said, we were gone for two weeks, um, out of state. When I get back, I see this, there was no prior notification, nothing, as a resident in my community, um, in Leewood South, that any of this was going on. So the first I heard of it was like the woman said, a flyer, when we got home. So, and we just got home yesterday. Um, the problem with, with the gentleman said is, when you're talking about nursing home and crematoriums in other areas of the city. He referenced one, he said it was there 10 years. How old is the other one? How long have they been there? Because as time progresses, we learn the dangers that we didn't know at the time. And we all know, when you come to burning, okay, you're going to have emissions. So when the gentleman was saying, "Oh, there's really essentially nothing produced," well, then you have the gentleman who talked to an environmentalist here in Nebraska at one of the organizations, and you find out how many pounds are allowed. So obviously, there are emissions being produced. Otherwise, they would never have to set the conditions, right? And so I just wanna say, this is a residential neighborhood, the church is right across from us. I understand you want to have, um, funeral services there. Um, that is your church, that's where you worship, okay? And that's where you want your loved ones. That doesn't mean that they have to be cremated there, as somebody else pointed out. There's absolutely no reason for it. I don't know anybody, um, who a relative has died where they've had him cremated, that they actually went to the crematorium, okay? You're going to funeral service at whatever church or, um, building that you worship at.
One minute.
And with the dangers of that and with the children there, those in our neighborhood, you have both young and old, okay? You are polluting our air quality and you have the problem also with, when I first moved here, Highway 370 was one lane each way. And now it's expanded, and with cornfields across the street. Now we have, it's expanded, now we also have all the emissions and pollution from all the semis and all the traffic now going down there. And so from a health perspective of all of these people, people with asthma and all kinds of health conditions, also, it's not just amalgams in people's teeth, what about people who have hip replacement surgery? Okay? You've got titanium, if that's what they get, you've got heavy metals in their bodies, whether it's hip replacement, shoulder replacement, however they're doing it.
Time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I just wanna say one thing, please don't do it.
Thank you.
Please don't.
Next. Anybody else? Seen nobody? Okay, go ahead. Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, Maurice Lovejoy, 1606 Walnut Creek. I just wanted to, uh, speak briefly about- I just wanted to speak briefly about, in opposition about things that filters and high temperatures and whatnot cannot deal with, like radiation from chemo, or not chemotherapy, but radiation therapy for cancers. The half-life for a lot of those treatments is seven days. If we're going to have high volumes of cremations, are we aware of how long that half-life has taken that remains to what's safe levels? If errors are made, they're across the street from a school. They're upwind of a school for a good six months of the year. So things like that, we need to be careful with, and we need to reflect on and be certain of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seen none. If the applicant wants three minutes of rebuttal, I'm all for that. Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing. Can you restate your name for the record as well?
It's Michael Hoyt.
Thank you.
I'm the owner. I just want to touch on a couple of topics. I got called Mr. W.C. a couple of times. That stands for Walter J. Kilnowski and Kathleen Kilnowski. Those are my grandparents. We're a family-operated mortuary. We're not a business solely for profit. And it certainly is not a big money or convenience item for this crematorium to be on site. That was for the knowledge of the people knowing, once we take your mother to us, not biomedical waste, but your mother, into our care, she would not leave our site again until that process is complete. That may not make a difference to some people. I personally would like to know where my mom or dad is. As far as the property values, I do appreciate that sentiment. However, I have purchased properties adjacent to the other funeral homes, and not a one of them has ever declined in value. My own children play in the parking lot of the funeral home. They've grown up around it. Regarding crematories and areas of lesser resources, you would be surprised to know statistically, the people that choose cremation are over the average of what is considered middle income or high income. And as far as burning people in the neighborhood, we would never describe it as such. We would be cremating the remains of your loved one. We are a good family business. It is very obvious and apparent to me, I'm born and raised in Council of Love, we serve the community, we are part of the communities that we serve. It is very, very obvious to me, the level of opposition. To be frank, we had no idea.
If you'd speak to the council, please.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
To be very honest, we had no idea, the level of opposition that was here. So that, that's just not going to be a good fit. We wanted to bring a good quality project to this community, and we will not be pursuing this special use application any further.
Again, I want to respect all sides. I would ask that we not clap. Is that a formal request to withdraw?
That is a formal request to withdraw. We are partners of the communities that we work in. This is not what we envisioned, to bring a good quality operation to this community to be met with this level of opposition. We would look forward to working with the community, perhaps on these other areas that the community seems to be a better fit. We truly are a caring organization. We are not a company, a big corporation. We're a family business. I just happen to live in Council of Love.
Appreciate that. And with that, we'll close the public hearing. We've got a published motion to approve, but with the applicant's request to withdraw, Mr. Thielen, do we have to take any other action, or is that appropriate?
No, I think that as long as the record shows that the applicant is requesting that the application be withdrawn, that should suffice.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the regular agenda items. Committee reports. Public Works Committee, Mr. Stube. We'll give it a minute.
It's 9:15. It's not that early. I think we'll wait two weeks. Maybe I'll ask them. I'll leave it to them. I'll ask councilor.
Go ahead, Mr. Stube.
Mayor, so four members of the Public Works Committee meeting met tonight to talk about the one and six-year plan, and we voted in favor, three to one, to move that one and six-year plan on to council for consideration.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Seen none? Council comments? Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I just want to do a slight commercial here. This past weekend, I participated in a fundraising golf tournament for the Paralyzed Veterans of America. And as part of that, I was with a fellow who's been in a wheelchair, paraplegic, since 18. He played golf. He played golf only because the city of Papillion contributed some equipment they have called the Solo Rider, and I have a picture over here someplace. Here it is. It's a golf cart that allows somebody who has mobility difficulties to play golf. It's at Eagle Hills Golf Course, has been there for a number of years. It doesn't get enough use. I'm very pleased with Rob, and I want to thank him, Rob and his crew out at Eagle, for bringing over that and contributing it to the Paralyzed Veterans of America Golf Tournament. I want to see more people use that. So if there's anybody here who are listening who has somebody or is somebody who is mobility challenged and they want to play golf, contact Eagle Hills Golf Course, and they'll arrange for you to do the Solo Rider, and you can go out and play golf.
I mean, they'll take it to Eagle, or Terror, too.
Yes. They'll take, it's housed at Eagle, but they will take it over to Terror if that's where you want to play.
Thank you.
And I really, really want to see it get more use than it's been using.
Mr. Ingberg.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to extend some congratulations to the department heads and the individual departments about a certain thing that I've noticed, that I'm really proud of. Being a part of, or attending the suburb meeting kickoff for Sub-Library, and planting 90 trees out at Prairie Queen, and spending a little time at the amphitheater, and a couple of other functions. I've noticed something that's really, I'm sure it's happened before, but I've really noticed it lately, that how much department heads and individual departments help each other with their events. You know, it's not a segregated situation where this is a library event, so they take care of that, nobody else is around, or any other department. Everybody participates in each other's events to support their activities. So I'm really proud of them for doing that. It's something I'm sure they don't have to do, but they do to make Papillion successful. So I want to thank department heads and the departments for that.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Had a meeting with Downtown Business Association to talk about some of the upcoming events. They're going to be starting, is it a first Friday or third Thursday, fourth Friday? They changed, okay, third Friday event throughout the summer, so they're really trying to generate some activity downtown. So that was encouraging. We've had a number of ribbon cuttings in the last couple of weeks. Shadow Lake continues to have openings over there. Olive Garden was today, and then a real special one, Midlands Hospital, and the VA Health Systems had a ribbon cutting today for the VA Living Center at Midlands Hospital. If people are not aware of it, it's a unique partnership in the nation. It's the first of its kind in the nation, where it's a partnership between the VA and a private hospital, and they're opening what they call the Veterans Living, oh, VA Living, Community Living Center, a CLC. And the closest one so far has been in Grand Island, and it's made for like 30-day to six-month timeframe, so you need to get out of the hospital, but you're not ready to go home. So it could be things like wound care, weaning off of oxygen, physical therapy, those types of things. So three to six months in the center, and they took two floors of Midlands Hospital, and it's under the control of the VA. One of the floors, I think, was about 12 units for memory care, and the other floor is about 22 units for this more skilled nursing rehab, so pretty unique thing. And then we had a number of dare graduations, and if people aren't aware, Veterans Park received a national designation as a formal Gold Star Memorial, in addition to the Blue Star Memorial designation we've got. So that was nice. And if anybody goes there, and there's a little bit of it of the new MIA/KIA POW Memorial that looks incomplete, part of that's because the quarry is delayed with the supply chain. There's a big block of quarry that will have the POW symbol that will be in front of the soldier that has his hand out, and then a little bit of landscaping, but other than that, for the most part, it's done. So might be one of the only memorials in Nebraska that's both an official Blue Star and Gold Star Memorial, so want to thank Tony for all of his work with that. Any other council comments? I'd originally told you we were going to do a closed session, but it's not time-sensitive, and just because of how late it is, it's with some land negotiation, but it's not time-sensitive, so I think we'll just do that at the next council meeting. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Sunday?
Second by Councilman Gaines.
Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
Stube?
I'm pretty sure I did.
Mumgarth?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Sixes, zeros, nays.
We are adjourned.